City Norco City Council Regular Meeting for Wednesday, September 19th. For tonight, I have a call to order from the City Clerk.
Councilmembers Newton, Bash, Hannah, Mayor Protem Gronmeyer, Mayor Hoffman, all present.
Do we have any speaker cards for closed session?
No cards.
Okay, we're going to close to recess, a recess to close session. Okay, it's seven o'clock. We're convening public session and reporting some action taken in closed session. City Attorney?
Yes, we recessed matters listed on the agenda in closed session.
Please stand for the pleasure of ladies and gentlemen.
Ready to begin. My pleasure is to honor the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Sam from the Vicky Northland Fellowship.
So coming to pray on behalf of the city council of Norco. Let's pray. The Lord is my shepherd, I shall not fear one. He made me lie down in the green passes. He had me beside quiet water. He restored my soul. He guide me in path of righteousness, for his name's sake. Even though I walk through the valley of death, I will fear no evil, for you are with me, your rod and your staff take apart thee. Heavenly Father, we bow down before you. We thank you for right now. We're coming for the beginning, the meeting of the city council, city of Norco. I pray right now for the mayor, that Hoffman, and all his members of the boards. I pray for all the leaders. I pray for the blessing of the wisdom spirit of God to be them, to believe the city in a faithful, humble. I pray for the wisdom of God to lead them everything. Lord, I pray for everyone. They come and support, and what's going on, the requirement. And I pray right now, Lord, for your blessing. Bless them. Bless them, Lord, for your mercy and your grace, the peace of this country, and the city right here, we support each other and love each other. Lord, I pray right now for everyone coming here and standing together. Right now, your blessing fall down to all of us. Lord, thank you for right now. I bless and I pray for blessing. Come for everyone, Lord, coming home in safety. I pray for your protection, like the word of God for Psalm 23, we hear from the word today. Thou we walk in the valley of death, we fear no evil, because you are with us. Lord, we thank you and appreciate it. We give glory and honor to you, and everything we do, we do in your name. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Sam, his blessings and worship. Scott, you want to jump your podium for business appreciation award?
Good evening, everybody.
It's on.
One, two, three. Here we go. Okay. All right. So, good evening, everybody, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Scott Rosa, and I'm a member of the American National Council here in Norco. And on behalf of the city council, I'm pleased to assist Mayor Hoffman with awarding EasyUp Instant Shelter, the Norco Business Appreciation Award tonight. EasyUp began in 1993 by 21-year-old Mark Carter in his parents' garage. He envisioned and created the first instant shelter, later to be known as EasyUp. Instant Shelter EasyUp is the original and continues to be the number one choice of instant shelter products and accessories in the world. With manufacturing and distribution facilities worldwide, EasyUp chose Norco for their 125,000 square foot headquarters. The product is so popular that they have customers in more than 100 countries, including Fortune 500 companies. With regards to their civic contributions, they provide donations and discounts to schools, first responders, nonprofit organizations, teams, and more, both locally and nationally. Most recently, EasyUp brought shelters and water to the firefighters and the first responders who were fighting the early fire. So, thank you, EasyUp, for being such a great contributor to our community.
Thank you.
And as Mayor Hoffman is for the award, I'll go ahead and read what it says. "The city of Norco hereby honors EasyUp for demonstrating and committing to Norco by establishing its worldwide headquarters in the city of Norco and for its ongoing support of the community." Again, thank you very much, EasyUp.
I'm just really excited to be here in Norco. We used to be in Riverside, and we feel like it's more of a family-type community, and we're really appreciative about the support that we get from Norco. We always have our big parking lot sale, and we just appreciate everybody who comes out and visits us, so thank you very much.
All right, we're going right on to presentations. This is John Distrika from Corona Northern Unified School District, Administrative Director of Facilities, and Alan Giles from the School District's Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, will do an update on Measure GG.
Good evening. Thank you very much, members of the council, city staff. Thank you for having us here. We are excited to share with you the progress that's being made with our Measure GG bond issuance. As you know, back in 2014, voters served by the Corona Northern Unified School District all the way from Eastdale all the way down to Tempsville Valley, supported and passed Measure GG, a $396 million bond measure. And so, we are about halfway through the issuance of those funds and completing projects with those. So, tonight, we're just here, we have a few slides, just to show, give you an update of some of the things happening, both in Norco and Corona. The way we look at the bond money is, we kind of live a similar life like you do as a city, is that our resources are limited, and so, the bond measure was a great help, because it became the seed money, I call it, to help us catapult our facilities projects. As you know, as a city council, there's always more needs than there are resources available, right? And so, having the seed money that we could then add other funds to, to multiply that money and produce some really quality projects has been very beneficial, helped the district. So, I'm going to turn it over to our Administrative Director of our Facilities Division, which is John Von Druska, and he's going to take you through the slide presentation, and then when we're done, we'll be available if you have any questions for us.
Thank you, Alan. As Alan stated, Measure GG, when it was passed, it was $396 million total. We set aside, $60 million was allocated for IT throughout the district, and then we broke it up amongst the three cities proportionately, 63% to Corona, 23% to Eastvale, and 14% to Norco.
And you might wonder, how were those percentages? How did they come up with those numbers? At the time that the bond was being prepared, it was based on the assessed valuation, property valuation, of each of those three areas proportionally to the assessed valuation of the entire district. So, at that time, Norco was 14% of the total assessed valuation of Corona Northern Unified School District, so that resulted in Norco receiving 14% of those bond funds.
So, I'm going to go over the modernization projects throughout the entire district that Measure GG is supporting. John Adams was one of the first projects. As you can see, our focus of GG besides modernization was safety, school site safety. We did fencing and security cameras at all our sites within the district. Also, some of the modernization projects were, we had a common theme. We did NPR rooms, administrative offices for the staff, as well as looking at other sites individually if we needed to rework some, modernize some kindergarten classrooms or areas. John Adams is down in Corona. This was the budget out of GG. The project cost was about $19 million, a little over 19.3. Measure GG's allocation was 9.7. The remaining amount that's paying for John Adams is coming from other sources, such as Prop 51, developer fees, and also other monies that the district generates. That's going to be the common theme. The other, total amount from other sources is always going to be the same, regardless of what school it is. We're going to show some pictures. This was John Adams before the modernization, as you pull into the school site. Couple of the classrooms. This is what John Adams looks like today. This is a new approach, and the new classrooms. A new NPR room, which also doubles as the lunchroom, the cafeteria, and a new library. Again, those were common themes in all the modernization projects throughout the district. Garrettson, again, another school that we modernized, same thing, multipurpose room, library, media center, admin office, security fencing and cameras. The budget, 19.5. 14.7 was from GG. The rest was from the alternate sources, as I discussed previously. Pictures of Garrettson before the modernization, classrooms. This is what Garrettson looks like today. Modernized, not just for security, but also for safety of all the students. Common theme in all the schools now is one access point, in and off campus, trying to funnel all traffic that comes in through the main offices. This is their NPR room. Modern sound system, modern stage, ADA compliant. Norco Elementary School. You know, again, security fencing, cameras. We added a new admin building, kitchen, library, media center, two play areas to the kindergarten, as well as some of the primary yards. Refurbished a couple of kindergarten classrooms. Project was 18.8 million. 13.2 was from Measure GG. The rest was made up from those alternate sources. This is what Norco looked like, Norco Elementary looked like prior to the modernization project. These were some of the classrooms and administrative building prior to the modernization project. You can see there's some old playground equipment, old administrative office. This is what Norco looks like today. If you haven't been over, very attractive campus, very modernized. Again, one-point entrance, one-point exit, primarily funneling through the main office. They have a new media center, new library, very nice sound system in their media center, which doubles as a cafeteria. This is the school library, students reading books, plenty of books. It's a whole new atmosphere in there, quite a bit of natural lighting. They have a reading corner that's set up with stadium seating. Someone could lead a discussion, we could do story, storytime in there. Very attractive, very different than from the libraries when I went to school. This is their NPR, the top picture is the NPR, doubles as also their cafeteria. You can't see it because the tables are down, but there's a horse on the floor, into the tiles. Very nice, ADA compliant, great sound system, rush driver. Will be more than happy to show it to you if you stop by and see him. He really is happy with the modernization. The bottom part is our computer lab. Again, students are learning, we're advancing in technology, and we have to keep up with that in schools. They're not taking the Bubbletron test like they used to again when I was in school, so it's all computers. Lincoln Fundamental, fencing, cameras, same theme, it's the same theme throughout the entire district. We want to secure our campuses, make them safe for the learning environment for the students, but also keep our staff safe and have control over who's on our campuses the best we can. 18.7 is the project cost. Measure GG's allocation was 12.5, and again, the rest was made up from those alternate sources, as discussed earlier. This is Lincoln's library prior to the modernization. This is Lincoln after the modernization. This is their NPR room, very nice NPR room, and they have the, that flag on the wooden is in the remaining administrative office. This is their library, and you can see the reading corner in the back on the top picture. Again, it's another common theme, you have a little gathering area, someone could read a story, talk about, talk to the students about anything that's going on in a more relaxed setting. The bottom picture is still the media center slash library. You see the doors along the red wall to your left. That will slide completely open, and you can join the two rooms. Rondo Elementary is a new school in the west side of Eastvale, already on border in Chino. 84,000 square foot, brand-new elementary school. Projected cost is 54.6, $20 million from Measure GG. The other 34 will come from other sources. These are conceptual drawings of PGHM, the architect that we've hired, that is the district's architect for the job. We're currently under construction with Rondo. It mirrors Reagan quite a bit. The Eastham, out in Roosevelt Campus, is a 105,000-square-foot campus, a two-story building and a three-story building, designed to hold about 1,000 students, with an emphasis on science, technology, engineering, and math. So, it costs about 67.9, 55.5 from GG, the rest from other sources. This is the conceptual drawing of LPA's version, vision of what the campus will look like. This is where it was currently, this was taken in the first day of school, first day of school. The top picture is the actual three-story building, the bottom picture is the expanded parking lot. We've had to redo the parking lot to make the access not only easier, but safer, more importantly, safer. Jefferson Elementary, the modernization. Again, this is a historical site, so we're taking a little bit of extra time with this. We want to make sure we retain that historical value and don't disrupt any of that. It is on the national historical site. Security fencing, cameras, administrative building and library, just to mention a few. Projecting the project's cost is 24.7. Measure GG's allocation is 24.7, so we're anticipating not having to use any other sources for that project. This is the conceptual drawings of some of the changes to Jefferson from what it is today. The new administrative building, NPR Jefferson, the new kindergarten entrance.
We plan on, Jefferson will break around, probably sometime this spring, April, May, we'll put in all of our interim housing. We'll do all this, get the flat work done, and all the underground utilities, get everything prepped, interim housing in, and we'll start demoing next summer, so that way, when students come back in August, they'll go into interim housing. By that time, we'll probably have demoed everything that's being replaced, and then we'll be in construction mode from that point on for about 18 months.
Moving on to Norco Intermediate. The planned scope of work is fencing, security cameras as usual, as well as new administrative building, new gym, a multipurpose room, and also, we're expanding the parking lot. We want to make sure that we do our best to correct some of the challenges with the traffic flow around that school that we currently experience every morning and afternoon. Project cost estimated to be 18 million. 9.6 is from Measure GG. The remaining amount will come from other sources. These are some conceptual drawings. We asked the architect to take a look at Norco Elementary. We wanted to keep along that theme of the theme of Norco. This is administrative building, the new administrative building. This is the overall campus with the elongated parking lots, it'll be more of a rectangle now instead of what we have over there. Administrative building from a couple of different angles. And lastly, like I've mentioned a couple times already, we've done security fencing at all our school sites throughout the district with Measure GG. And we just wanted to say thank you for your support, and if there are any questions, we'll do our best to answer them now.
Council, any questions, Greg? Kevin?
I sit on that oversight board as this current holder back there, and it's been a little rocky road, a little bit here and there, but I will tell you, the school sites are beautiful, and I'm very impressed with the, right now, the current staff that's putting that together. You guys are just top-notch, and I feel like as an oversight board, we're very fully informed, and you give us information, take that out in the book, and I feel like the money is well spent.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Rodden?
I appreciated the update. We've gone to some of the schools, and it really looks good, and I'm glad we're modernizing. Isn't, I remember the little bubble things and stuff like that, and you know, we've gotten away from the 1950s, and we've made them not only better, kids learn better in a better environment, but we made them safer.
Correct.
So, for that, thank you, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
All right, next presentation, my Southern California Edison overview on the community choice aggregation. This is from Eileen Lawrence from Government Relations Bachelor. Hi, Eileen.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. In a previous meeting, City Council had expressed their interest in hearing from one of our subject matter experts to provide an overview on SCE's. So, SCE's overview on community choice aggregation. So, here tonight with me, I have Megash Shreeny, who is a Principal Advisor at Southern California Edison, who will provide that overview tonight.
Well, hi. Hi, good evening. My name is Megash Shreeny, and thank you, respected Mayor, councilmembers, city manager, and all the city staffs for giving us an opportunity to share SCE's perspective on community choice aggregation. And anytime you have any questions, please talk to me. This is, I try this presentation to be very generic, not getting into more technical details, but please talk to me if you have any questions at all. So, community choice aggregation is, as you all know, it's a community choice program that permits cities, counties, and joint or authorities to buy electricity on behalf of your customers within their jurisdiction and transmit our SCE lines. Now, I'm here representing Southern California Edison, and I'm bound by CCA Code of Conduct, where we are not here. SCE does not lobby or market against CCA permission, but our responsibility here is to give you information on what under a new CCA is and how things are going to be in terms of, like, since we still be opening 87, at the same time, share something about portfolio, cost indifference among PCI, which is the current proceeding that's been happening in CPUC, and we're expecting a decision sometime next week. So, so now, SCE's perspective, we completely support customer choice. We believe that, we believe supporting in customer choice as long as all the customers are treated fairly and customer indifference is maintained, and at the same time, the critical liberty and the safety is preserved. So, our commitment to serving customers is that in procuring or in the sale of electricity, SCE is not allowed to profit from the sale of energy. California Public Liberty Commission actually constantly regulates, and they oversee all our activities to make sure that we are making informed decisions that benefits our customers. Now, getting into the CCA world, how things are going to be, basically, the energy procurement, which is buying the energy supply, will be the responsibility of CCA, and they will still be using SCE's transmission and the distribution lines to transfer the electrons and to reach it to the end customer. And as I said before, SCE will still be the billing agents. You would, in our SCE bill, you would see, as you see, the portion that's been highlighted in the rectangle, it will show the rates that's being developed by CCA's under those categories, and within the bracket, it will show whether it's a CCA or if it's an SCE customer, it will show as if it's an SCE. That's the changes that we will be bringing into our billing statements once the city decides to, from a CCA. Now, CCA, this is an interesting topic, before, actually, I went into the details of how this affects customer rates. Generally, there's a small example that we shared with all. It's like if I, along with two of my colleagues, go for dinner, then one of the, in that instance, me, I mean, you know, after ordering, I just move out of the restaurant as not paying my fair share. So, the question is, how can we calculate that the cost has been equally shared with all the, all three of us? That's number one, in a way that it's not benefiting one person over the other. So, that, in terms of translating that into electricity rates, there's a state law that requires remaining customers taking part from SCE to be indifferent to the CCA departure. If you look at the bar chart, it's an illustrative example of how this is being accomplished, and what is the current issue with the trade. Let's assume that SCE's average cost is about 10.6 cents per kilowatt hour, and the prevailing market value, what we mean by that is the market value of offering these procurement resources into the market. We recover about 5.2 cents per kilowatt hour, then the remainder of 5.4 cents per kilowatt hour is called an above-market cost. That's something that cannot be recovered from the market, and this 5.4 cents is actually equally shared with all the customers, all the valid customers. So, when a customer departs, actually, there is a mechanism in place, which is called PCI A, which actually goes by the formula that's being established by California Public Liberty Commission that allows coming up with some sort of value aspect of what the portfolio is going to be, and hence, you can derive what the above-market cost is going to be based on that. Now, based on the current methodology, unfortunately, the, this methodology is adopted 15 years back, at the hand when the California is coming out of the energy crisis. The current mechanism gives a value of about 7 cents per kilowatt hour, and hence, according to the equation that's being, that's being, that CPUC allows us to calculate, the above-market cost is 3.6 cents per kilowatt hour. Now, you clearly see there is a cost shift that's happening between a departing customer and a valid customer. Again, the current methodology assigns above-market cost to, the way it assigns the above-market cost has some flaw in it, and that's why, that's why the CPUC has opened up an OIR to look into a way of updating a mechanism in which this departing cost can be allocated in a way that both sides of customers are indifferent. So, we are expecting a final decision sometime end of next week. Currently, there are a couple of proposed decisions that's in table. One is being put on by the A and J Roscoe, a proposed decision, and then the Commissioner of Color Detriment, she, Color Detriment has another proposal, which is unfortunate to be proposed, that's been put forth by the J Roscoe. Now, and in a required cost allocation mechanism, actually, what it does is it creates a sort of a false signal to the communities that's considering CCA permission. SCE, along with other two utilities, also participated in this OIR, and we also came up with a proposal in a way that, you know, the cost always follows the customer, I mean, 3.1 cent. cost indifference should be, you know, patched up or maybe corrected by a true-up mechanism. The mechanics of that, it's still work in progress, but how we're going to implement that and what sort of, you know, framework it will require in order to operationally implement those things. So those are the kind of challenges that they're still waiting on, the final decision to come up and coming up with a framework on how we can actually implement those. So, again, like, this is one important aspect, you know, PCI, which is a very important aspect to consider. As you see, the, if the current mechanism is not being fixed, then there's always a cost shift that's been happening to one set of customers. Moving on to the impacts on customer rates, reentry fees, and financial security requirements for CCAs. At the same time, if a customer of a CCA is in warranty return to service, any reentry fee imposed that the commission deemed is necessary to avoid imposing cost on other customers shall be the obligation of the CCA, which means that, you know, if, if a customer decides to become a CCA and then, when they, if they decide to come back to become a bundled customer, then I think there are, there are some aspects of it, it's been defined in the proposed decision to calculate a cost which does not, you know, creates a cost shift for existing bundled customers. At the same time, there are a few exceptions over there. Customer return, it could be part payment or contractual obligations or not being covered in this. So in the event, CCA is unable to discharge its obligation, fees shall be allocated to departing customers. The calculation of FSR, which is the financial security requirements, and the reentry fees calculated based on the incremental administrative cost, incremental cost incurred for procuring electricity based on a six-month period, and this FSR is something that will be greater, it'll be six months with a minimum of about $100,000, $7,000. And just to give you an idea of how our portfolio looks like, in the year of 2017, SCE did deliver 36% of its electricity through green sources, of which about 32% comes towards the green renewable portfolio standards. And as you all know, the state had 50% RPS to fund by the end of 2030, and last week, there was one other Senate bill that's been passed to be 100% RPS by the end of 2025. So SCE takes responsibility for a cleaner, as well as a greener future, and we would like to progress and join the journey which California is progressing towards for a clean future in a most affordable and cost-effective way. Apart from that, we also offer a program called Green Rate Program. This program allows the customers to opt for the 50% or 100% of the energy can be served through clean sources such as renewables. Now, working towards a clean energy future, just some of the samples that we have, about close to 260,000 customers own solar installation as of fact 2018, and SCE is investing about $30 million into the distribution rate between 2017 and 2018. And we have also installed about 1,250 EV chargers being installed as a part of the Phase 1 SCE's charger ready program. Again, SCE also offers a $450 of a clean fuel energy bar for any EV electric breaker owners. This actually goes up to three owners, so the first owner as well as the next two owners who actually owns the electric breaker. And about 46% of the energy that we deliver is completely carbon-free. Apart from that, by 2030, SCE probably proposes to provide about 80% carbon-free electricity through support of energy storage, that's something that's coming up pretty big, and electrify about 25% of cars and trucks and about $7 million in terms of application notification, and electrify about one-third of the space and water heating. So, you can, this white paper that we published last year, it outlines SCE's vision towards the clean energy future and our targets to meet the clean energy targets by, the clean energy objectives by the end of 2015. With that, I'm, for any questions that you may have.
Counselor, any questions? Representative Burman, turn down there.
You're welcome.
Burman?
Thank you for your presentation. Would it be possible for that presentation to be sent to council members?
Yes, definitely.
Thank you. And then you and I have one other question, I don't know if you can answer it.
Sure.
But when we talk about you guys providing the distribution and then CCA's basically providing the energy, so then if there are issues with distribution, like a fire comes through, whatever, that falls on SCE, is that correct? Is that responsible?
Yes, I assume.
Yes, okay.
So the poles and wires are still part of that?
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Greg?
No questions. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you so much. Thanks for the opportunity.
Kevin?
No. Robin and what we'll do, because we've been, for those of you who don't know, this council has gone ahead and, working with WRCO right now, to form the Western Community Energy and CCA involving several other cities in the area. So we're exploratory, exploratory, and that's why the Edison's out here putting the presentation together. And Robin, I'll also get your copy of this, because if you're like me, acronyms and definitions, you guys love to use them, and when I get two pages or three pages of them out here, I know it's hard to follow. So, I appreciate what you gave us, the information. Thank you for presenting. Counselor, any other questions? Andy, you have any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thanks for the opportunity.
All right, moving down to city council business. City Council Communication Courts and Regional Boards and Commission. Burman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Been busy the last two weeks. First off, myself, the mayor, and Mr. Vasch went to the lead convention down at Long Beach. Then I was selected to the Riverside County Convention Executive Committee as an alternate, which meant I had another meeting to go to, and everything, that's all right, I liked going to those meetings. While at the lead, some of the places I, seminars I went to, went to some of the housing, there was a lot of seminars in there about the housing and what's happening, what's going to us, and what are we trying to do to us, and it gets pretty scary. And I'll let Kevin and the mayor talk about some of their, they went to some of the same One seminar I went to was harassment. It's like, we all have to do that, we started, we take it every other year, get a certificate, there's some ways to tell whether there's harassment going on in your workplace or not, and there's a jillion ways that, that can fall under harassment. The most interesting one, I thought that I went to, was the one that Kevin did, was thinking big, leveraging resources. He gave a, prior to Silver Lakes and Memorial up here, how we managed to get those constructed with very little funds, and they were probably about 80 to 100 people in that room, and they were just amazed at how we'd done that. They jumped all over us with questions soon as the presentation was over, and then all weekend, we went into different rooms while they stopped, and some of them from as far away as up north, they talked about Silver Lakes, because they're bad kids, they're out here playing soccer, but it's a pretty, pretty popular deal statewide. But very good presentation on the group that Kevin was able to give, because he did a great job. Getting on to another commission, RTA, remember they started back in June with the 25 cent bus rides for the students, and they went through until September. So labels over 190,000 students rode those buses over two months. That's a lot of course. And one of the most popular trips every day, and they said the buses were full each way, was going to Disneyland. And was the Disneyland bus, it becomes very popular because people have figured out, they can catch the bus at Disneyland and ride out to the area of UCR, and a lot of the professors and employees at UCR, they're trying to get them to start riding the bus to take cars off the road, and it's starting to work pretty good. Another thing RTA has done is they've added more weekend buses, it's banning him at Moreno Valley, and Marina, because they're getting to be in quite a demand for more buses on the weekends. RCCTC, although we have the 15 freeway construction going on, there's updates every week on the website, what's going to be, when's going to be closed, what section is going to be closed. Getting on to Vector, I don't know if anyone read the papers much, but that mosquito that started coming in here two years ago, the Aedes mosquito, it's A-E-D-E-S, he's what they refer to as an anchor bite, he bites below the nose, and they're very pesky, and the only way they spread diseases is they bite another mosquito that carries those diseases. And it's happened, it's all over the state, they're, they're getting all over the state and people are complaining. But Vector, Vector's coming in here every day, spreading certain areas, and they're still working every week on that hotspot over across the river there in Eastvale, it goes from, bless them there, all the way past, several last time they got control of the mosquito, so they've been hurt a lot. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Burman. You forgot to add that when we were leaving the hotel on Friday, the guy at the hotel, he goes, "How far do you have to go home?" And Burman tells him, "It'll take us three hours to get home." He goes, "How far?" "60 miles." And it did, it takes us just three hours to get home. Robin?
Nothing to report.
Greg?
Thank you. Good evening. A couple of weeks ago, I attended the Chino Desalto Authority Board Meeting, and just like to report that our product pipeline that will be going under the Santa Ana River is still on schedule, that all the special materials have been ordered, and that work should begin in January and in the shot in March. And that's all I have. Thank you.
I'm not going to get into it in depth. I attended a conference up in Monterey regarding community choice aggregation and aggregation, and I arranged to have the acronym sent to everybody, took a day. I'm not really going to give a report on that so much because the mayor, we had a meeting today, and I think that it is so complicated that I think that when we finally present it to the public, I think that we need to have both sides, and that the goal is to save money on energy. And I just think that's the wisest choice, but it was a, what was most illuminating is there's a very big difference in the mindset between the North and the South of California. And the North, they're all crazy, and the South, we have the, we have sense, but I'm teasing, but it's just a very strange mindset up there, and very, very fascinating. And then, went to the League of Cities, as Burman stated, and what was key about all of that was there was several topics, but most interesting was a discussion on brick and mortar businesses as opposed to online sales, and one of the big contentions is point of sale. Right now, if you sell something from Norco, you get that tax increment. So if you've been a community that's put, you know, on Amazon or Costco, that's point of sale, that sends something, mails it to, let's say, Alaska, well, there's a big push now to say, well, okay, Alaska gets the user tax. So if you're a community that has set up your entire financial basis on sales tax revenue, and all of a sudden it's given to somebody else, you could be in trouble. What's prompting all this is so many people now are going out of state to order things. So the product's coming to California, but it's actually coming from Arizona, and Arizona gets the tax. So that's what's prompting that discussion. A very big one was local control in terms of zoning, one of the big pushes, and, you know, Norco, with our big properties, we're a target, and one of the things we're trying to do is take away our ability to control our own zoning laws. Right now, we have one house per half acre, and there are people that would just love to be able to put multiple units on a half acre and go up, and that is a real fear. It died last year, but it is alive and well, and when you are at the League of Cities or you are at one of, at the Bourbon House in Montreal, there's a huge push to make that happen. One of the things I was very proud of is that Norco is ahead of the curve in many, many ways. I have to hand it to staff, people don't realize that we're ahead of the pension liabilities in terms of the oversight of our books, things like that. We're doing things, I mean, we talk to council people who literally don't know what an unfunded liability is yet. They're learning, and they're learning the hard way, but we're ahead of it. One of the things that I'm very interested, and I think, I think the mayor signed up for too, there's actually a rural coalition of rural communities, because they're trying to force one size fits all on our towns, and so, Northern California and Southern California, and maybe the mayor will talk more about that, but we're trying to band together to say, hey, wait a minute, we are a different kind of community. The number one thing that people are upset about statewide is potholes and streets. And ultimately, the problem is the state keeps our money, and so we have to find ways to fund that as much as we possibly can. I met with the President of Norco College and Congressman DeConno this morning, it was a very interesting meeting. One of the things they're trying to do is to get the whole veterans thing really going over at Norco College, but there were four points, but the most important point is Norco College is trying to call this, when you, for example, if you're in the Marine Corps and you learn to be a fireman, what he's trying to do is, if you come out of the Marine Corps, say you've been a fireman for 20 years, all of a sudden, you have to take classes and learn how to raise a ladder again. If you're a, if you're a corpsman, a Navy corpsman, they teach you how to put a bandage on, you have to go through all this retraining. So what they're trying to do is create a database that as you come out of the military, you get credit, college credit for things you already know. And Congressman DeConno was very, very, I was very impressed with him today, and he was really on top of it, and it looks like there's an avenue there. I'm sure the mayor will talk about this, we have our MIAPOW coming up on Friday, I'll leave that to him, and then our wheelchair basketball tournament is the 19th through the 21st, it actually, the tournament's actually the 20th and the 21st. On the 19th, we actually have a, a veterans team and a, we have two wheelchair basketball teams that actually go to the prison and play on the first court, where the first wheelchair basketball game between two organized teams in history took place, and they play in front of incarcerated veterans. So you can't see that, but just, just think about the fact that inside an orgated community, we have one heck of a basketball game. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Kevin. All right, so I want to thank you, everybody, for coming to Patriot's Day on September 11th over at the fire station. I know Scott had to leave, probably to the fire, but Eric, you guys did an excellent job, Brian and your staff did an excellent job. Well done, we're remembering that day. So, please mark my account. So, please mark my calendar every year, September 11th. We do remember. Shifting gears here, I went to the state of the county down, a presentation down in Tmetilla on the, well, that was two weeks ago. The, very interesting how the county is projecting all the good things they do, but when you talk to them behind the scenes, they're in trouble financially, just like everybody else. So, a lot, as a lot is coming out, and they're trying to do it through economic recovery, just like we are. So, you will see things doing, growing in the county, and that's good. I mean, hopefully, they get it all done. And again, back to League of Cities, attended that. The rule being had to deal with, and you guys, most of you see this, small towns, you don't get any services. That's just, the state takes care of the big cities, and they forget about two-thirds of this state in all the actions they do. Sacramento has a tendency to do a one-size-fits-all mentality, and that's going to happen, especially in the state as diverse as I, as ours. But the good news is the lead, new president of the League of California Cities is Jan Arbuckle, and she's from a small community called Grass Alley up in central California. So, that's a good news. And she is spearheading this fact that rural cities, and it was good, I mean, Burwood and I sitting there with Kevin with our cowboy hats on in meetings, and they come up to us, "Oh, yeah, we need to belong to this." And, and we told them we would. Because it's important that even though we're just a little city in the middle of all this concrete jungle, as Kevin would say, it's important that we, our characteristics stays true to it. And the fact that we can fight for it, some of these things from the state. Also, I attended some conferences on economic development, land use and housing. Keep, I can't say this any better, go to the polls this November, take a look and see who's right. That's all I can tell you. I went to a lot of these presentations, and nothing against people from Northern California, but like Kevin said, they have a different mindset. And people in the coastal communities have a different mindset. Bay areas have a different mindset. And yes, housing is important in this state, but it shouldn't consume our livelihoods in our lives. As one of the older members of the League of Cities said, "Yes, we have a problem, but we didn't create this problem. Sacramento created this problem." And they're trying everything they can to fix it. So, we have to make sure that we look at laws and legislation coming down, that we look at what's our community. We can't fix what's going on in L.A. We can't fix what's going on in Fresno, but we sure can protect what we have here. I'll get off my soapbox. Went to the Riquel meeting, and that's the West Warren plant. Actually, we did a teleconference, which is kind of nice. I just drove to Chad's office, and we sat and talked to him. They're seriously working on, if you live over there in the Eastvale area and you worry about the odor, they're trying to get it fixed. Of course, like anything else, when it comes time to dealing with wastewater or your well water, it's dollars. So, it is budgeted, but again, we're trying to get it fixed, and that'll be coming down. Hopefully, it'll have it done by next year, right, Chad? Everything? So, it won't be December 1st anymore. Like Kevin said, went to the Western Community Energy. That's the formation of the CCA, which the Edison gentleman you was talking about. We're in infancy stages of that, okay? We're, this is just initial. We're looking at it to see if it's feasible. This isn't set in stone, just to let you know. Kevin learned a lot by going up to Monterey along with one of the council persons from Eastvale to determine what is this all about. And it's really important that he got educated up there. We have our meetings, or we're meeting almost every week over at Riverside. And on October 10th, we'll get a report, a saving report from the, on the rates, and hopefully, we'll be able to determine a go or no-go at that point, is if this is actually going to work. So, just keep in mind that when you see stuff like CCAs and these aggregate groups for Edison and Power, this is, this is not new. There's, what, seven in the state center right now? Well, again, I look at all my acronyms.
Seven in state that are just in formation.
Yeah. So, I, this is the new way of distribution. And our goal at this time is actually to, one, to make sure that you get cost savings somewhere, or at least keep it reasonable. And that's, that's our goal for the residents. So, with that, I'll go to item number two, and let me catch my papers up, and City Council Consent. I have a calendar. And it's, item number four for the, for the public.
No, Mayor.
Whether you have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a first and a second.
Please vote on assignment. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Moving on to item number four, public comments. Again, this is one of those things, if you want to fill out a card, it's in the back in the foyer over there, and give it to the city clerk on any items not on the agenda. For our young students here, for the youth advisory committee, those cards will, if you put a card in, that'll be during number five, okay? So, not this time.
Luisa Tassan from Assemblymember Cervantes's office.
I'll come back to her later. Okay. Bill Naylor. Reminder, it's three minutes.
Hey, Bill. Have you seen a long window? I would like to, first of all, thank you, council and staff. I know sometimes I'm kind of a pin in the butt for a few things I bring forward, but I wanted to take a moment to thank council and staff for the efforts that they have been making, that I've noticed over the last several weeks. I have complained and been concerned about on the trails, about the trees or different shrubbery and things like that that might be blocking the trails or whatever. And I know that we have been doing everything we can to encourage property owners to take care of their part of the trail. But I have noticed, even though we have through some real tight budget times here with the city, that I have seen city contract crews out trimming trees on the trail, and I just wanted to thank staff and council for that. As relates to that one other thing, I would also like to encourage code enforcement to kind of keep an eye open and look at some of the things that are put forth on areas where property owners are in fact blocking trails and things like that. It just, it's a two-way sword. We need everybody working in the residents as well as the city. But thank you again.
Thank you, Bill. I see Chad and Steve taking notes, so it's good.
Nicholas Ramos.
Good evening, Nicholas.
Good evening. I have an issue with Norco Hills Road. Norco Hills Road is a 1.3 mile road off a pedestrian Parkway. My problem is crossing the street. The street speed limit is 50 miles per hour, so it'd be quite difficult to cross. On the other side of the street is Corona. I like to cross the street because of the sidewalk, and a little further down, it has McKinley Elementary and also Parkview Park. There are 85 houses on the Norco side of the road and a lot more on the Corona side. I would like to propose a crosswalk or a stop sign around the middle of the road. The only crosswalk on the road is at the beginning of the road, and the only stop sign's at the end.
Thank you, Nicholas. Just so you know, we cannot comment on anything that's on our agenda, but thank you.
Thank you.
Luisa Tassan from Assemblymember Cervantes's office.
Good evening, Luisa.
Good evening, council members. Greetings from the Assemblymember Supreme Cervantes's office. I'm here this evening to give you a legislative update. The assembly legislative session recently ended August 31st, and the assembly member had nine bills passed out of the Senate and Assembly to go onto the governor's desk. As you know, the governor has until the end of the month to either sign the bills, veto them, or do nothing, and they can come off. Five of those nine bills have been signed by the governor to date and hot off the presses. It was a topic of discussion at today's Chamber of Commerce meeting. AB 1786, which was the Veterans Student Curriculum Articulation Bill, which, although we didn't, didn't get credit there today, the assembly member started that bill, and she and Senator Roth made sure it got through both houses. That was signed by the governor this evening. That's a very important bill to veterans. It gives them credit for their military, academic credit for their military service. Also, AB 1896 passed, which clarifies that student survivors of sexual assault attending public colleges can communicate confidentially with counselors, believe it or not, that had not been confirmed. Also, AB 193 was signed, that's the Zero Emission Assurance Project, a used clean vehicle rebate bill. This bill provides a rebate for the purchase of a replacement battery or fuel cell for zero emission vehicles for low-end consumption. And of course, for those less of us in this region, we know how important that is to meeting the state's climate goals and emission standards. AB 91 was signed by the governor, which is the Riverside County Carpool Way. This bill seeks to ease late-night traffic jams in Riverside County by requiring a study of the feasibility of allowing single occupancy cars to use the HOV lanes during off-peak hours. And the fifth bill is AB 2123, which reforms the existing process for local governments to transition to district-based elections by providing for a mutually agreed to extension of up to 90 days to continue negotiations between local governments and potential plaintiffs. Assemblymember Cervantes respects Norco's desire to preserve the unique character and way of life of Norco. The assembly member recognizes the strain the lawsuit has put up the city through. However, there was nothing our office could have done through legislation to help Norco once the lawsuit began. AB 2123, which was signed into law, was in time to be responsive to the concerns of Norco, the concerns that you had raised, and to try and help all the cities across the state. That is why the bill was supported by the California League of Cities, our statewide, as well as the League of Cities Riverside. Assemblymember Cervantes looks forward to working with Norco next year to address possible additional solutions to Norco's remaining concerns on this matter. I understand my time is up. I was going to go into additional funding that the assembly member has gotten for Norco. Respect the time.
Thank you.
Pat Ower Street.
Just a point of order, Mr. Mayor. There is no lawsuit at this point, just so we're clear on that.
There is no lawsuit.
There is no lawsuit.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and citizens of Norco and staff. I'm here representing the rural organization in Norco Waterline Association tomorrow night at the Weaver Hall, 6:30 to 9:30. We're going to be hosting a candidate's forum. We have our supervisory candidates, Eric Linder and Karen Spiegel, who'll be there. And we hope all five of the city council candidates will start at 6:30, and I just hope you attend. Breakfast will be served. All no, no beer, sorry about that. And then following Thursday, our regular rural meeting, September 27th, at 7:10 at the famous Six Feet Deli. Our assembly candidate, Bill Assaly, will be there to meet the citizens of Norco. We're very sorry that Assemblyperson Cervantes was unavailable, but we hope, we hope he'll come out and meet Bill Assaly and make it to the candidate forum tomorrow night. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Bonnie Sliker.
Hi. I too wanted to make sure everybody comes tomorrow night to the candidate's forum. And the other event that's coming up, the Norco, the Norco Navy Birthday Ride, that is October 13th. And I just found out today that in addition to the two commanding officers of the base who want to ride with us, there is an admiral going to be there that wants to ride as well. So, my task now is to find horses so that sea power doesn't need ground power.
You're having them play a long heck out of them, huh?
Yeah. So, anyway, we, so hopefully, you will be there to cut the birthday cake with the admiral. And so, the Navy is really making a big deal out of having a birthday party in Norco this year.
I guess your niece's horse is going to be very busy, huh?
Oh, not sure that'll do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
A seahorse.
A seahorse.
Corinne Holder.
Good evening, Corinne.
Hello. Good evening. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for bringing the Measure GG School Board Report here, just so that some Norconians can actually see where their money is being spent and see a little bit of the presentation. I have been honored to serve on the Oversight Committee for a few years now, and I wanted to also invite you on October 2nd, there will be the Oversight Committee, all of us on there, actually do a much more in-depth presentation to the school board. So, it's a really nice presentation. It will be available on the school board, but on the school site, school board, no, that's not it. CNUSD website. I don't know. Sorry about that. But it is available for everyone to see later, so you can see where all of those dollars are being spent. It has been really enlightening for an Oversight Committee. That's the first time I've done anything like that, to see how well the staff and the citizens, residents, taxpayers, all work together. We're from three different school areas, three different cities, so everybody wants their dollar, and we all want to make sure that each of our districts gets the money that it needs and the money that it was promised. So, it has been really an honor to serve on that board and ensuring that our kids are safe and that they have a better learning environment in the future. So, I just really appreciate you guys bringing that forward. And we have some news coming up, so that's item five, and I'm going to intrude on that. But it is really an amazing process for people that don't go online and read the whole agenda to see the application process, the recommendation that the kids have to provide, what they have to fill out and list, and some of their accomplishments and goals. So, good luck choosing those kids, but they do an amazing job, and it's really nice to see that program continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Corinne. Corinne, is it October 2nd?
Yes.
I know it's here.
It is. Yes, that's.
What time? Do you have the time?
7:00.
7:00 P.M. Thank you.
Harvey Solomon.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm glad to hear the good news tonight, Kevin, about the unfunded liability. That was a good presentation there that seems doing well at that point. Because I was just reading, not very long ago, where that we were still trying to come up with $800,000 to pay back in 2013, goes all the way back to 2013, we had unfunded liability back then at that little bit. So, it's great news that that unfunded liability is being taken care of, especially that $800,000. And I hope that from 2013 on, we don't have that kind of a deficit. And maybe you could, one of the next council meetings or sometime in the near future, make another report on that and bring us up to date on that. Burwood, I was really glad to hear the, about the PowerPoint presentation Kevin made at the League of California Cities on the Veterans Memorial. That's a, that's a great tribute to the city of Norco and to all of us, especially to the veterans, no matter where they're at. It's, it's a wonderful thing for them. However, I have to differ with you a little bit on the silver lakes thing. You said that there... You said that the presentation was about we built it with a little bit of no money, you know, and it's an amazing thing there. So I was just reading not very long ago, grand jury report, the grand jury wasn't so sure about that, about how we built it with a little bit of no money. In fact, one of the things they said in the report, that we violated the restrictions that had been placed on the property by federal judge. They also said that we built some commercial things on the property that wasn't supposed to be built, and that was a violation of the restriction also. There's also some misuse of bond money that cost us a $500,000 fine. So I'm not so sure where you came up with that idea, that we got it for nearly nothing. Maybe we did, maybe that's where the problem was. Anyway, tonight in the closed session, you heard Mr. Bueker case a little bit more tonight, and I hope you did the right thing. You know, it's been going on the way that long to die and to turn an old man into like that. You know, if you go back and look at a lot of these cases that you counsel or previous counsel, it's okay for the code enforcement to go after and you bring this bad dog lawyer out of LA out here to take care of the business, and you ignore the people that they're harassing at the time. So it's cost your man over $100,000. So I hope you did the right thing and weighed out for that tonight. Thank you very much, and have a great day.
Thank you, Harvey. Just so clear up a comment, the grand jury report, yes, grand jury report was issued. The city did a rebuttal. It is to the DA, and at this time, there's no action taken from the DA's office at this time. Thank you.
Jeff Kanghan?
Good evening, Jeff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. To lighten the mood up, I'll just remind you that today is International Talk Like a Pirate Day. So I got a pirate joke for you. How much does a pirate pay for a corn on the cob? A buccaneer. I'll explain it to you later, Jeff.
I never enjoyed life when I was a kid.
That's right. On a more serious note, I am here as the Vice Chair of the Veterans Memorial Committee, and as the Mayor mentioned briefly in the earlier session, that this Friday is National POW MIA Recognition Day. It is the third Friday of every September, and so we haven't commemorated that day before. But on Memorial Day, if you remember, that we installed the POW MIA Monument thanks to help from Rotary and the Veterans Committee. So now that we have a POW MIA Monument at the memorial, we will start recognizing the third Friday of September, which is day after tomorrow. So I invite all of you, I invite staff, I invite the residents, to please join us up at the Veterans Memorial Plaza at 8:30 AM on Friday. And we will have a very special ceremony for the POW MIA. The ROTC from the Norco High ROTC is going to be coming to do the empty table ceremony. And it'll be a special moment to recognize that. So please come and join us. And just to echo what the Mayor said earlier as well on 9/11, I also appreciate our public safety, fire, and police. And I will also echo, Brian, it's a pleasure working with you and your staff on all the special events that I'm affiliated with in the city. So I want to publicly take another moment to thank all of your staff. They do a wonderful job. They work tirelessly and they earned the recognition that they deserve. So please pass that on. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Mike Thompson?
Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Council. To the City Attorney, interesting what Cervantes's representative mentioned. For you, has the Shankman Group initiated the beginning of suit against us, the city of Norco? No. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, that concludes public comments.
Well, thank you, everybody, for the public comments. And Nicholas, I almost forgot, if you get with Mr. Chad right there, and I know they switched their nameplates, I don't know why you guys did that, but trying to sneak one over on me like that. Okay, Chad, raise your hand, or Nicholas, if you can get with our bug workshop director, and maybe he could be a little more involved with what's going on with that, I appreciate it. Okay, with that, we'll move on to another great opportunity, is our discussion item on number five, appointments to the Norco Youth Advisory Council. Chair, I think that's yours.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Hoffman, City Council Members. I'll try to run through this briefly. I know we have students in here that I'm sure have a lot of homework to get done tonight. This item is for Council's consideration, appointments to the Norco Youth Advisory Council for the next term, beginning October 1st, and runs through May of 2019. The Norco Youth Advisory Council is a body of high school students who provide counsel and support to the City Council on youth-related projects and community initiatives. The requirements to serve on the Norco Youth Advisory Council is for students grades nine to through 12, either attending Norco High School, John F. Kennedy Middle College High School, or if they're residents of Norco and attend a school outside of the school district, whether that be homeschool or another school, again, outside of the district. The recruitment began on August 21st through a public notice. We also shared the information with the various schools. We shared the information through social media and the city's website. The deadline to submit an application was September 10th, and during that period, the City Clerk's Office received a total of 11 applications. Here's a list of the 11 applicants. We do have the applicants here in the audience who would like to speak and share with you their qualifications and why they should be appointed to the Norco Youth Advisory Council. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise I'll go ahead and move forward and ask the students to come up and speak.
And just for clarification, it's nine members of the council?
Yes, so the recommendation is to appoint nine members to the Youth Advisory Council.
Does Council have any questions of staff, grade down there?
No.
Kevin? Kevin, yeah? Earl? From? Thank you, Joe. And with that, go ahead. I don't know what order you want to have them come up, or is there?
Just as they submitted cards, so that's the order I'll go in.
Hopefully, we have all 11 here, and they all submitted cards. And if not, I'm going to call them anyway, so that's part of the process.
Okay, so we'll start with Anthony Alexander Garcia.
Good evening, Anthony.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council staff. I just wanted to give a brief update on why I believe I should be appointed to the City Council. This is my returning year, and I have seen the fruits of the Youth Advisory Council from the Youth and Government Day, which participants from my school participate or to the emergency apprentice training with the firemen. I have, through the political science classes at the Norco College that I've been a part of, I've invigorated, it's been invigorated of a fostering sense that promotes why City Council and youth involvement in matters regarding City Council are so prevalent in building a society that only recognizes our youth and the next generation to lead the city. And I just believe that being a returning member, I would be able to provide that expertise and the experience that we so desperately need in times where we experience various upcomings and new circumstances, where we desire and we desperately need people who are able to take on tasks of being a Youth Advisory Council that will be able to tackle the problems and issues that youth are facing. And being student body Vice President of our senior class at my school, I have been able to communicate this program and been able to inspire not only my clubs, but also Key Club and JFK and other clubs to come and give of service to the city, promote a wide variety of aspects to not only the city itself, but the youth incoming in. And the main purpose, or purpose is to what I want to come, is not to list any resume or accomplishments, because I assume you guys have cleared over my applications and my emails, but I just wanted to give you the personal aspect as to who you would be appointing to, who you would be interacting with. Because again, the Youth Advisory Council is to give of service to the City Council, to provide an update on the youth and what we are facing and how the city as a whole can enhance and enlighten our presence here. And that can be done through a variety of outlets, such as Youth and Government Day, which was a huge success, in my opinion, which truly amazed how accessible we can be as a community if we work together. And I know my time is nearly up, so I just wanted to thank you for, again, for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Anthony. And thank you, Harvey. I truly appreciate that. They're nervous up here, so it's good for them.
Natalie Phun?
Good evening, Natalie.
I'd like to apologize for my informal attire, because I just came from the college class. I'm really sorry. So let me introduce myself to you guys. I transferred to JFK from Santiago High School this year, because I wanted to challenge myself academically, and so I can be prepared for when I get into college. And so where I'm at JFK, I see a lot of diversity and a sense of acceptance, and I want to bring that to the Norco Youth Advisory Council. I hope to create a fun working environment with adults and students, where they are thoughtful and expressing their thoughts and ideas freely. And at JFK, I'm the A.S.C. Speaker Commissioner, and I think it's important that students take part in the school and that they're involved and that, to make sure that they enjoy being at school while learning and making new friends. And at Santiago and JFK, I started a club called One Day's Wages, and we help raise awareness and money towards ending extreme poverty. And last year, we raised a couple hundred dollars, and we donated all of that money to the organization One Day's Wages, in which the money goes to ending human trafficking, global hunger, and supporting child health and education, and more sanitation and gross empowerment. And through being the president of One Day's Wages Club, I learned to be responsible and organized, to make sure that the club is successful and works well. And I was also on the Corona Norco Youth Advisory Council back in eighth grade, so I have some experience working with the district. And I volunteer at the Corona Circle City Center, which allows me to participate in community events and work with children and know how the CCC works. And I'm very hardworking and open-minded, and I hope I can contribute to the Norco Youth Advisory Council. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mayor.
Blake Torres?
Good evening. For short introduction and overview of myself, I'm Blake Torres. I've been a resident of Norco for all 17 years of my life, and I'm currently attending Centennial High School for the IB program, which is a college preparatory program. And really what I wanted to do, I realized as a senior, I want to really give back to the community, which has kind of shaped my lifestyle and views of the community. Now, in school, the IB program, a lot of hard work requires determination, and I feel like through that program, we see a lot of different views of the world outside of the academics. I'm the editor-in-chief for our school newspaper. We have done collaborations with the Press Enterprise, and we're currently talking with the LA Times. And I feel like that's a good way just to get around and know your community. Along with that, I'm a Big Brothers Big Sisters mentor, and just had to explain what that is more in depth. We basically need to work with kids one-on-one and help them not only academically, but also help them in terms of being a role model for them. And I think that's really important. I've also, just over the summer, I attended the Dartmouth Bound Diversity Flying Program, and it taught us a lot about leadership and communication. It was a really great experience. It's over in New Hampshire. And then worked for Feed the Children, it's located in Ontario, and it's on the weekends, three hours a day, well, on the, or just a single day, sorry. And you basically work packing boxes for either disaster relief or impoverished areas. And then over the last two years, I've been working on a program and founded it, basically looking at waste in our community, plastic water bottles, and melting those down. So this year, I'm working on implementing it on a communal aspect and looking to help the homeless through that. And going off of that, I think really what I want to achieve through the Youth Council is to make personal, meaningful interactions with the community, especially the youth at large, and kind of interact with them in a way that inspires them to hopefully get involved either service or politically. And I think that's really important, because it's just such a great thing. I'd like to thank you for your service.
Thank you, Blake.
Nicole Logan?
Hi, Nicole.
Hi, good evening. I'm here on behalf of the Great Lions, Great Council. My purpose for joining is to be more involved in my community. Like I said, I was a member of Ucine last year, during which I was able to volunteer in Norco, and learn more about what we have to offer. If I was to be accepted, my goals for this term would be to spread the word about the Norco Youth Advisory Council and get more teens involved, along with getting more people involved in our community and participating in some of our local events. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Tassia Rushi?
Good evening. Is it Tasha or Tassia?
Tassia.
Tassia, okay.
Well, thank you, Mayor, thank you, City Council Members, and thank you, staff. Good evening, my name is Tassia Rushi, and I'm a senior at Centennial High School. This is my sixth year in the International Bacheloriate Program, which, as Blake mentioned before, is a college preparatory program. And it is my fourth year in our school's magical choir, and I have over 480 hours from working in our local communities. I was one of two representatives of our girls' state organization from Centennial High School, and I work with organizations such as Key Club, Kiwanis, Habitat for Humanity, Big Brothers Big Sisters, Hospice, the current Public Library for math tutoring and book reading. And I interned at the current Regional Medical Center Surgical Department, and I recently started working with the CNUSD office for math tutoring. I hold multiple officer positions in our school clubs and community organizations. For example, I am the Executive Assistant of our Key Club in the Inland Empire called the Division 15 East. This has given me a chance to enhance my public speaking skills and practice my leadership. Some things that we do with Key Club is hold fundraisers for the Pediatric Trauma Program and the Children's Miracle Network, along with many, many other charities. Through my experience, I have become an ample time manager and a great communicator and efficient organizer, a more approachable person, and a very hard worker. I dedicate almost time every day to help out with my community in any way that I can while maintaining a full point of GPA in all of my IB and AP classes. I have the work ethic and grit to get things done, and I always make sure to give 110% in everything that I do. I work very well in groups, and I really hope to work with this one. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Kinzie Hansen?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kinzie Hansen. I am a senior at Norco High School, and this community has done so much for me already throughout the 17 years of my life. I believe that is my turn to finally give back and do something for the city of Norco. So on behalf of Norco's youth, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to finally share our voices and opinions through the Youth Advisory Council, even though it's my first time, I know this has been around for a while. So coming from a family that has spent multiple generations here, the traditions are very important, not only to us, but also to the city of Norco and the community. The Norconian culture is very recognizable when I meet new families and new kids, not only at school, but around the city, and even in Corona, when I travel outside of the city. And as discussed earlier, the characteristics and values are very important, not only to our city, but to the families as well that have grown up here. These traditions and bonds that are carried by the city's youth, and with this opportunity, we can take control of our future and freely speak our opinions to the members that make a difference, which are you. a difference, which are you, and hopefully us. And development and progress are vital to the success of our youth, which I've seen earlier was like the measure GG, which is very beautiful, by the way, and it helps create a great learning environment for young kids. And we are the future of the amazing city, so hopefully we can make some great changes to our bright future.
Thank you.
Isabel Henriksen?
Good evening, Isabel.
Good evening. I know a lot of you know me, so I would say thank you, because last year I did get to serve, and we did learn a lot how to properly conduct a meeting as a council, which is very interesting. We learned a lot about our local government, which I know a lot of you are like, oh, it's there, council members, we've done a lot, but it was interesting on our part because we did represent that way. So this will hopefully be my second year on Youth Advisory Council, because last year I did get the Youth Emergency Preparities Program started, and I'd like to continue that because we did have a big turnout, so I feel this year as more advertisement and fix those things that we didn't do last year, and I know we wanted to do a lot of new stuff. One thing is I'd like to expand on our Youth Government Day because it was such a big hit, and we did have like a lot of people that were like, oh, I wish I could have done that. So I feel advertising was bad on our part, so that's something that I would like to fix this year. I do also have leadership skills because I am an ag officer. I am actually the reporter for the chapter team, so I represent Norco High School, and we conducted meetings. So our last meeting, we actually had to conduct a meeting for a hundred and sixty-five students at Norco High School, so that was very interesting. We, I have also done many speech competitions, so speaking is one of my favorite things to do, and I'll say it's something that's interesting to me. So thank you for your time and your support this year.
Thank you.
Michael Young?
Good evening, Michael.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Michael Young. I'm a senior at Norco High School. I'm Activities Commissioner and Associate Student Body, and I'm a manager in the school basketball team. I have also served two terms in this council, and last year, I was honored to be elected Chair. During my tenure, we successfully organized a Youth and Government Day and Emergency Preparities Training, introduced a volunteer program, Volunteer to Win, which is slowly building to be something special. As my goal to finish what we have started, I'll also introduce the new legislation. Government is slow, and the more we push, the more we can accomplish in our time here. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me tonight.
Thank you.
Kyle Brown?
Good evening, Kyle. Good evening, Councilor and Mayor. First off, I would just like to thank you guys for letting me speak tonight, and first off, I would just like to tell you a little bit about myself, so you guys don't just think some random guys coming up here. So my name is Kyle Brown, and I'm fourteen, so I'm probably the youngest of our speakers tonight. And I go to Norco High, and I'm a Norco resident. I was part of the Devil Pups Youth Program, which I'm very proud of, which I got to go to Camp Hamilton for ten days, and I got to enjoy military life, not the full part of it, but a little bit of it, and get to experience teamwork and leadership skills. I'm also currently applying for the Riverside Explorers. I am part of CR Youth, which is a program where we try to help people with cancer, whether they're kids or adults. I'm also, I was, last year I was the Vice President of Club Life, and our whole goal was to help prevent drug use in our school. And I love the traditions of Norco, and I would just like to say that I was a recipient of the James Hogg Award, and I think we should keep that reward here forever. It's a football award for the JAC program. I think it can bring a diverse opinion to this council, because I am a 4.0 GPA student. I'm also an athlete. For the last four years, I've played football, and I received the award, and I'm very proud of it. And I'm also just joining this year, I'm joining wrestling. And I would just like to say that we have great traditions in Norco, and also, I experience the city of Norco every day. I go to the parks, I go to the Laura A. Ingalls Memorial, I go to the parade, I go to the fair, so I can give you guys a very unique experience because I experience it every day. Good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
Mayor, that concludes the speakers.
I'm looking at my list. Jaylene? And Jasmine? Just making sure I'm getting an opportunity.
No more cards on this item.
All right, we'll bring them back up to the dials. Devin, I want to start with you, because you're going to smoke a couple of drinks.
Motion to approve all nine. Well, I'll tell you, I'll go with eleven, even though the two aren't here. Motion to approve eleven, I have my motion.
You gotta stick with the nine.
All right, motion to approve all nine. I've looked at your faces, I thought you wanted to do the other two. Right here in a second.
Should we throw a eleven? For nine, yeah, because Diane will hold this task.
Mayor, I apologize. The motion was made by?
Devin.
By Ash.
And Secedin.
By Grandma.
Okay, please vote on this item. That motion passes unanimously.
First of all, I want to thank all the applicants and for all those who were selected. It is not an easy task to stand in front of that podium, and I can tell that a few of you have been through Mrs. Grandma's speech class through FFA, did very well, and other ones have gone through, and you keep talking about Key Club and that, hey, interactive right there, okay, don't leave this poor Rotarian out. So, but you did very well. I appreciate, just like the rest of the council members here, get involved. And I tell you, there are some impeccable resumes here among the students. You guys, and it's all the students in the school this year, and I know they left, but if we turn out good kids, then we're proud of you. So I'm not going to tell you that Diane, I miss her name, it's not a taskmaster, but she's going to put, she's going to put your work. So I'm happy any of the council members would say anything about that. You ready?
I think they're amazing, but by the way, there's two Kiwanis up here and there's one Rotarian, so please, join.
No, we're the ones that put the P O W A in my mind. All right. Okay, well, thank you. And I, the safe word will take you for about five minutes, and so we're going to have a about ten-minute break. Is that enough time?
I think five minutes is sufficient, if the appointees can meet me out in the lobby.
She has to do the official business part, so you can be here out in the lobby, and we're going to, the dials will take a break. We're going to continue on item six, the public hearing, resolution number two eighteen fifty-four six A. And Chad, that's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a follow-up item related to a previous adoption of the Modified Ordinance for the Telecommunications Ordinance, which is eighteen point five seven in the municipal code, which is the Wireless Communication Facilities Regulations. As part of that, what happened after that was adopted, staff, Public Works, and the Planning Department worked to develop an application that telecommunications companies would use universally. We didn't have an application process for that. We did have a process related to the Planning Commission and for wireless facilities that are put on private property that they review by the Planning Commission, et cetera, and that is a process. But for Public Works, we didn't have an application or a process to review these applications for small cell tower infrastructure that would be in the public rideaway. So rather than having different applications and processes and make sure there's consistency on the applications that are submitted regardless of where they are, staff worked together developing an application process, using other agencies as examples, and then developed our own to customize it to meet our needs. But we want to make sure we're always got an example to comparison and requirements and materials that need to be submitted regardless of who the applicant wants. We provided a sample, or a sample D application that applicants will use as part of the packet. And part of that process was also identifying the fees that are going to be involved depending on the type of review that you want. And as part of that review, there are basically three different levels. There's the administrative permit, which is in the purview of the Planning Department, the conditional use permit, which is in the Planning Department, and then small cell facility permit, which is when reviewed by Public Works Department. The Planning Department already had fees established as part of their normal review process for these types of applications, so we didn't have to create anything new, and those fees are identified at the bottom of page one of the application. But Public Works didn't have a fee for our review process, so we needed to add two fees on there, one for the default small cell facility permit review for each site. So if an applicant wants to submit for several small cell tower reviews at different locations, each of those locations would be charged a four hundred and fifty-dollar fee for reviewing that application. And then any application that specifies what they're supposed to provide each and every time for each site, and then we would review it and comment accordingly. And then if there's any type of modification, because we recognize sometimes applicants years down the road may want to modify their pole or infrastructure on there, they would come in again to request that, make any changes, and we're basically charging half that price because it should be a normal review, and it shouldn't be cost the same to review it since it's not new, they're really changing out some minor infrastructure, and it should be easy to process that sooner. So we developed those two fees, basically, the small cell tower basically includes three hours of engineering time to review it, which would be engineer and myself, between us reviewing that, writing any comments, and responding to the app. And again, that's per site, so basically every time we look at somebody, we get three additional hours to review each of those projects. So the, as I indicated before, the remainder of the fees you see at the bottom already exist and already adopted in the fee schedule according to the planning director. So the only ones that you're asked tonight to review, to approve, so that we can officially forward with this application process, is the two fees that I just reviewed, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council, questions of staff, Bourbon?
Yeah, Chad, on that, in the public rideaway, that, not in the horse trails, it's just on the, not in the trails, right?
The public rideaway includes the trails, but would not, but we obviously would not allow any poles or infrastructure in the trail itself.
Okay, well, then you go in there.
No, correct.
Chad, I agree.
Thanks. Just a follow-up. Do you do any, let's say on the small cell in the rideaway, do you do any follow-up inspections?
Well, yes, because they are going to install, so we, as part of that, our inspector will make sure that they clean up the site, put installed as they should have, not let any debris, make sure everything gets, that most people over there is below grade or how it's mounted, so there's not anything. So it does get inspection by us.
And where do we pick up those inspection fees?
That is a separate fee as far as in the encroachment, they get an encroachment permit in addition to the review of the permit, and then we charge that time.
All right, so.
And that's already an established fee.
All right, so we're covering those fees on inspections under the encroachment permit?
Correct.
Okay.
This is just a review only, to get the actual permit to do their work.
Thank you.
And Chad, in knowing that telecommunications agencies are going all kinds of ways to put these things up throughout the state, is, are these, are they charging the fees and these other regulations, is that pretty consistent with what other cities are doing?
Yes, they're all adopting fees to establish review of these applications and application process, because otherwise they get automatically approved for failure to review them. So it's important that we have this process established, so it gives us the opportunity to look at them as, are they, as far as how they're set up, are they monstrosities? When we say, no, that's not a small cell tower, it's not consistent with the area surrounding area, they need height things better, they've got, you know, too many boxes attached, they want stuff below ground. This gives our chance to reasonably, as the state says, require modifications to their proposal if it doesn't meet the aesthetics of what we're trying to achieve, but we have to be reasonable in that, and that's kind of subjective terminology.
Correct, because we can't be just negatively saying, no, you can't do it everywhere.
Correct.
Okay, so it's all part of the process.
Yes, absolutely.
And no other questions of staff? Any cards on this?
No cards on this item.
Okay, open the public hearing and close the public hearing now. And then, so bringing back to the dials, any other discussion?
Just a comment in that we fought the battle, what, two years ago or a year ago, to retain local control of these, there's now a move at the federal level to take control of it. So just so people are aware of that. Motion to approve?
The first and the second?
Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, go to item seven eight, Appeal Hearing, Conditional Use Permit, twenty seventeen dash oh nine, Modification Number One, Hidden Valley Holding LLC. Steve, motion first?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is an appeal of an action taken by the Planning Commission. It's in regards to the existing modular unit that's set up next to the clubhouse for the Hidden Valley Golf Club. The, in two thousand and eight, the Planning Commission approved it, just for a brief history. In two thousand and eight, the Planning Commission approved a modification to the CUP that allowed the golf course to go in, and that was, and the approval of that allowed for the modular unit to be placed up there for a program called the Gettigren Foundation to operate out of there. And it had a condition on it that once the foundation was no longer there, that the modular unit had to be removed. And the program's no longer there, but the modular unit was not removed. Excuse me. In, in April twenty-sixth, or on April twenty-sixth, twenty seventeen, the Planning Commission considered Conditional Use Permit two thousand and seventeen dash oh nine, which is, was a request from the owner-operator of the clubhouse building to let the modular unit stay there on a permanent basis. And after some discussion, it was, the Conditional Use Permit was approved, but it was approved only, the request was for it to be permanently used as an event lounge. After some discussion, it was ultimately decided that the approval would only allow the structure to remain there for a year while the expansion of the clubhouse, which had been approved, was going on. The removal date of the modular unit was April twenty-sixth of this year, twenty eighteen. And prior to that expiration date, the applicant filed an application to modify that Conditional Use Permit to have it considered to be a permanent structure for a pro shop storage building. And what had happened during the construction for the expansion of the clubhouse, there were some setbacks and complications that arose from grading, and it was not possible for the owner to close it while construction was ongoing. And so to make it continue to work, and part of that, part of that was that the expansion of the clubhouse was going to include a pro shop in the basement portion of that building. And in trying to excavate for the placement of that pro shop in the basement, they encountered a significant amount of granite that pushed the cost of the project beyond what was anticipated and able, or what they were able to do. So they temporarily moved the pro shop over to the modular unit while construction was being done. And as I indicated, the applicant, before the expiration date of the one year, applied for a modification to that Conditional Use Permit to have the building be considered as a permanent structure. as a permanent structure. The, the planning commission, in its deliberation, the two issues that had to be considered were, the two primary issues were the architecture of the building and if it was compatible with the clubhouse. And then two, if the, if making the building permanent would be consistent with the city council's allowance of the expansion of the leech line for the septic system. If you recall, the city council did grant an approval for them to expand the leech line without having to connect the project to the sewer system. So that it's, it was debatable as to whether this would be considered an expansion that would require connection to the sewer system, or because it's already connected to the septic system, would not be considered an expansion. Those are the two primary issues that the planning commission had to consider if it was going to approve the conditional use permit modification. The architecture of the building was presented to the architectural review subcommittee. Both of them had some concerns that the design of the building itself was lacking to be, the concern was that the building was never reviewed as a permanent structure. They had some concerns that it might not have been designed similarly if it was originally proposed as a permanent structure. In its deliberation, the planning commission ultimately determined that it was a requirement that a unit be removed after Gettigren left the building, so to speak. And based on that, denied the modification to the conditional use permit request. So that action of the planning commission has been appealed now. And with that appeal, the options that are available to the city council are to uphold the action of the planning commission, which is a denial, and this only requires a roll call vote, to overturn the action of the planning commission and approve the project with conditions of approval. And a resolution with conditions has been attached that mirrors what was presented to the planning commission. And if that is the direction of the city council, you can approve it as is, you can change the project, you can change the conditions, those are the options available to you. And if it is the direction of the city council, again, the two issues that need to be considered, primary issues, would be architecture of the building. If the current design is satisfactory, or if it is determined that the building should be permanent. And if that is not the case, if the council determines that they would like some changes to the architecture, then you would need to add a condition that the architecture would need to be approved at staff level, at planning commission, or by the planning commission's architectural review subcommittee, or by yourselves. And then the, the second issue again is the septic system. The resolution that you have, the draft resolution that you have attached to your report includes a finding that the use, making the building permanent is not considered an expansion of use since it's already connected to the septic system, and therefore does not require connection to the sewer system. So the resolution has that finding in it. If the city council determines that it should be approved, but that it should be connected to the sewer system, we would need to take that finding out and add a condition of approval appropriately. So with that, the applicant is in the audience. She has a presentation she'd like to show you, and I will conclude my presentation if you can ask any questions.
Counsel, have any questions of staff? Kevin, you want to appeal this? Go, I'll start with you.
No, I want to hear from the other.
Okay. Greg, any questions of staff?
Yeah, Steve, just on this, so I stay straight on the history on this. With, when Gettigren was there, there were the two restrooms in that modular building. That, the septic tank was sized to accommodate that fixture count for the modular?
Yes, and I'll reiterate on that, thank you. The Riverside County Health Department did come out and do an inspection prior to the expansion of the leech line. And their conclusion was that the tank itself could accommodate both buildings, but that the leech line did fail. And that's the reason why, that they had to come to the city council to get a waiver of the, to be able to expand the leech line. So the tank could accommodate both of them, but now the leech is handling also.
And was it, then when this came, the last time too, to some of that, was the, was the leech line broken, or just it didn't work?
It basically failed. I don't know what the details of that are, you were, but it, Chad might have.
Yeah, the inspection by the county determined that before they determined what should be done, the entire leech line system made the building fail. It was not functioning at all.
And that's what they came up with, we have to double the size of the leech field or leech lines?
Correct, they had to repair the entire system and double the size to make sure they can meet the capacity requirements that were anticipated based off the two buildings on the tank.
Excellent.
Okay, I have any questions, so let's hear from the applicant. Open the public hearing, open the appeal hearing, and Nicole?
Good evening, council members and city staff. I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to discuss the future of Villa Mofe and Hidden Valley Golf Club. Since the remodel and expansion, Villa Mofe and Hidden Valley are at a rapid growth of 40%. We're bringing in between 800 and 900 players a week from all over Southern California. The remodel has allowed us to increase our capacity 100%, seeding up to 320 guests. Even better news is that we've been able to attract the significantly larger events that we were having to turn away prior to the expansion. Our business model is very optimistic moving forward. We see Hidden Valley as a prime facility for weddings, banquets, business meetings, but most importantly, a place that our community can go and celebrate in their hometown. We are attracting a professional clientele withholding the standards set to be the number one golf course in the inland empire. The goodwill and positive feedback that Villa Mofe has worked so hard to obtain the past several years is paying huge dividends as we are projected to do $1.5 million in sales in 2019. Therefore, I'm asking that the city council overturn the denial by the planning commission, that over the next 12 months, you allow me to construct a permanent pro shop and storage unit up to code and standards of the city of Murco. I can drop your attention to this screen. We have the existing pro shop, as you can see the ramp in the front, that was designed in 2008. And then we have the proposed pro shop that you can see is up to ADA code. I don't know how to work this thing. Okay, so there we have the exterior photo of the existing building as is. And this is a proposed exterior, this is what the clubhouse looks like now after the remodel. So if we can make that building match the clubhouse, I think we can definitely start going in the direction of creating that resort subtle atmosphere. We also have a basic plan of what the inside of this building would be constructed as. You can see the men's restroom on the left, the men and women's restroom, and that's actually a wall between the pro shop and the restrooms. Those would be an employee-only restroom, so there would be one employee in there throughout the whole day that would be using those restrooms. The pro shop actually, with the check-in counter, adds up to about 900 square feet that we'd be using for the pro shop, and the rest would be considered storage and one office space. So with my team, we're committed for the next 20 years per my contract with Hidden Valley, and with your help, we can make this a huge success for our community. I appreciate you allowing me to be here again.
Thank you, Nicole. Don't get run away. Does counsel have any questions of the applicant? Kevin?
First of all, I wanted to say that at the planning commission meeting, that I was in attendance with, in the back, ducked in on my mountain. And I want to apologize to you for the harshness that you had to go through.
Thank you.
And we'll put that in the rearview, Mayor.
Yes, that I wanted you to.
So just a couple of questions that I have is, what came up at that meeting and that Mr. King brought up, that the building was on a temporary foundation?
Yes.
And, so I was trying to look at this looking at different life-saving aspects with it. So I'll go back and forth between you and Steve if you don't mind. Has our building official crawled under there and looked at the foundation? Do you know anything about that?
The building official did, our contract and client checker building official, he did go out there and I spoke to him about what it would take to make the temporary foundation permanent. And he says it's a relatively easy process. You don't have to move the building or anything, you basically just pour under around the existing piers, and that's acceptable to, by the state building code, which we've adopted for a moment ago.
Is that, the way I, no, you. The way I was looking at it was like the school district modulars that just have like perimeter walled, and then it's just a jack with a, like a corkscrew. And I felt if you were similar to that, it's good enough for the office of state architecture that that should be more than sufficient to consider that a permanent foundation. So if our building officials find with it, then I'm fine. I know we had a conversation about filling it all up with concrete, I'm just going, I don't think it would be cost-effective for you. So I'll work through that. The other was, just checking that it's required, that perhaps, there's no additional extra hazard, so at this time I don't think fire sprinklers are required, maybe additional extinguisher or two, which is phenomenal. And then I think you addressed all the ADA concerns?
Yes.
So I'm comfortable with that, with just the life-saving and the liability portion of it. A little bit on the architectural changes. Steve, it would probably make me feel a little better that these hedges and Phil still are committed? Would you mind meeting with, like, Jafarian and Hedges, just to get, well, he's an architect also, just see if they're kind of happy with the changes?
Sure.
I'm fine with them, but just to kind of see that over.
Yeah, I'm sure that all hedges are extremely happy with the architecture and the safety of the building, and of course, that's our number one priority.
And Steve, maybe you can just talk to Phil about it and just have him come and meet with you?
Yeah, what we can do is, we'll just have a meeting with both of them, Phil and Nicole.
Reinvent the wheel or anything like that. I mean, and I also felt at that meeting, and I don't want to come off wrongly, but I think with the information that was provided to planning commission, I think they did make the right decision. But it's a puzzle if a little further down the road, and I just want to let you know that, how important your business is to us, and that, I know it may be our purpose, we do look down the road, but when we did that preservation zoning on, like, Wiley Labs property back in 2008, 2010, and we had this resort element, part of that resort element, like hotel, was to have a symbiotic relationship with the golf course and the restaurant. So long range, you know, this is all important to us. So I do, really do want to see you succeed with it. So, yeah, I'm fine. Thanks.
Burman, any questions of the applicant? No more questions. Burman?
I just had a few work clarification, and they're not the technical building questions of my colleague at the end. But you were here about a year ago, and our expectations were laid out. So can you explain to me, when you agreed to those expectations, what has changed that now you agreed, you know, before to a year, and now you're looking to make it permanent? So can you explain to me the process and why that's changed?
Yes, so a year ago, when I originally came and requested that the building stayed, that we requested the CUP for the year, that was the first time that I found out that the building wasn't supposed to be there. So in that year, I definitely had plans on tearing it down. We had other plans for a pro shop, and we did move it over there temporarily so that we could get, we could break ground and get construction going. In the meantime, obviously, we had to re-clear the leech lines, and we hit the granite, and you know, that took that, our budget away from the pro shop. And then, you know, you got to kind of start thinking future, and we think about, okay, we have this building, it is a good idea to have the pro shop over there, let's think outside the box, it can save everyone money. I know that in the state of California, they're deterring away from tearing buildings down because of landfill. And, you know, it kind of just all rolled into, can we make this work? So that's why I'm here today.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And then, you know, somebody that is a vendor and a customer at the location, the remodel that you guys did do is absolutely amazing, and the improvements are just really well-done. And so I think my input on it, I was sitting up waiting for my son to come pick me up at the last thing we did over there, and I was looking over at that building, and architecturally, I do believe it, it needs some work, and I'm not 100% sold on the pictures there, but if it matches more the clubhouse, instead of just adding a ramp and stuff, I would probably be more comfortable because it does kind of stick out and looks like a temporary building.
Yes, definitely. Yeah, we'll definitely get it to match the clubhouse, and so we'll paint it from molding. I already have my architect on it, and my actual, the project manager that built the project is here tonight, and we will make it look amazing.
Thank you.
Steve and Paul, on the, when we met with the engineer out there, something he said is that when the building was put in even as a temporary building, it was built in with the idea that it would, under the same engineering thing as a permanent building anyway, correct?
Correct.
So, I mean, it's, it's got a foundation that is actually set for a permanent building, it just needs to be tweaked a little bit to make it permanent, correct? Just want to make sure that's clarified on there. Nicole, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to try and add something to this mayor.
Okay, are there any cards?
Yes, Mayor, I have one card. Bonnie Slater.
That's it?
That's all the cards.
Okay. Bring your card up here.
Okay, Mr. Bash?
I just want to thank you very much. One of the things that when we were at the legal cities, we talked about is economic development isn't about generating taxes, isn't about, it isn't, there's a paradigm shift. And what it's about, it's trying to help people within the community make money. And that, for me, when the man said that, I just went, oh, goodness, that's really true. Also, the golf course has gone under all over the place because the land is so valuable. I think that this golf course that very nearly became an eight-hole, a nine-hole golf course, I think that it's fantastic that you are still, still going off. Um, I think that it's, it's fantastic that you are still, um, still in operation succeeding. I think one of the things that, that we always forget is that every parcel proven in simple code is different. So what works on one property won't work on another, so for me, I don't have a problem with the building. But I want to thank you for your entrepreneurship. I want to thank you for your partnership with the city of Norco because one of the things, we are your partner. We are business people's partner. You are generating income and you're creating a space that's not just, uh, an economic engine, but it's also a community meeting place, which for years, we tried to find something like that that was economical and a place where people could come together. I mean, you have everybody going there, from football players to, to weddings, to all kinds of things. Again, as, as to, um, Councilman Newton's point, the school district has dozens of these buildings sitting everywhere. When it was first approved, it was approved to be full of kids, so that's why they had to go the extra mile, which I'm sure that you know. I don't really have a problem with the design, but I like the idea of going to Phil Jafarian and Pat Hedges. I think that what they will do is, but I also have great faith in my partner that you're going to create a very, very nice space. So unless there's something else, I would make a motion.
Nicole, go ahead, please.
Okay, sorry. I have, I have one more question for Steve. What information did we get, it kind of goes back to what Greg said, what information did we get that the planning commission did not get? Or was there a decision to deny based on our one-time waiver?
Yes, the, the deny was based on the agreement to the one-year, one-year, uh,
waiver? So did they not get the information about the granite issue and all of that?
I received it.
Oh, they did get that information? Okay.
Yeah, they got the same thing that you did. The only difference is that between planning commission and city council, we had our consultant go out and, and need to set the site.
Before I entertain a motion, is, I'm ready for Nicole, Katie. Anything further to add to that at any time? Okay. All right, um, final comments, Mr. Newton?
I'm fine.
Kevin, you are answers. Um, Berwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, uh, thank you, Nicole. Uh, I think that's one of the nicest restaurants for, that Norco has. And I'm happy that the business out there has picked up tremendously. And, uh, but your weddings, I mean, you got a nice place for weddings, could have always eaten people in places for a nice wedding. And when I was mayor, I performed one wedding out there for some friends of mine. It was a little rainy that day, but they thought it was a lovely place. And then, uh, two or three years ago, we hosted the League of California Cities, we're saying, we be out there and the people were still talking about, what a nice place. And so I, I support you a hundred percent and thank you for remaining in business out there because it is, it is good to, thank you.
Robin? And I don't have much to cover, but I'm going to jump in this. The one thing, and Kevin hit it correctly, there's a lot of history on that facility and that site to the different business models that we're putting there. And sometimes we inherit things that we don't know about and that goes through a lot of times in history. And Norco has changed over the last couple of years and fact that how we do business. And I think one of the commissioners said right, and I agree with, uh, Councilman Newton. I think based on the information and the parameters that the planning commission had, they had to make that decision. But I remember and I recall what Commissioner Azavito said is that sometimes we have to look beyond that and look at the business venture of this thing. And I think that's my look on it is, this is a business in town that has actually been good. I am not a golfer, but I know several and they love the course and they appreciate what's going on over there, um, and the changes. So when we talk about bringing business into town and having visitors coming to town as a destination point, I think the Hidden Valley Golf Course and Villa Malphi's, uh, is the model we want to do and, and try to promote. So with that, unless Kevin has something else, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to the approvals to the structure that she be allowed to keep the building as is with the, going for, um, Phil. I'm moving a resolution. There you go.
With, with the added condition that, that architecture is approved by the KRC?
Yeah.
Go ahead, the second? The first and second?
Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, really quickly, I apologize, but before she leaves, I wanted to identify Kenzie Hansen back there, who, by the way, is the high school softball player of the year for the nation, correct? For the entire pen? She's very good.
All right, I wanted to throw a couple of fast pitches at these guys on youth, on the youth council.
He couldn't catch it, so.
I know he couldn't. Not at sixty miles an hour. All right, we're moving to city council, city manager and staff communications. Berwin, I'm gonna start down there. Robin? May I? Drake?
Yeah, just to remind everybody, uh, I forgot my little, um, information sheet that I'm comparing with. The, uh, under fundraiser that's coming up in a couple of weeks, you weren't at the last meeting. Uh, we went ahead and, or I went ahead, put the screws to everybody that we invited to the table. Just to let you know, your share is three hundred dollars. And, uh, we'll just give the money to Cheryl, then she's going to show her range everything. Okay?
That's yours, three hundred?
I think that's what it was, it was three hundred.
We could, we could do four or five, that's fine.
If you like to be glad.
Well, they're all in here.
Things have changed. Can you try to raise a million bucks, okay?
Kevin, do you have anything? John?
You weren't here?
I'm right here. Before I jump over there and, and be authorized, I just want to remind everybody, especially out there in, uh, that our community cleanup and paper shredding on Saturday, October twentieth, um, for all the volunteer groups out there, for residents that want to come out, get ahold of, uh, Brian Petrie and the volunteer coordinator and come on out and help the community. This is the one time, if that George Ingalls Requesting Center, you can come instead of driving out to El Sabrante and sitting in that line for two hours on a Saturday, you can come there and it's free and we'll, we'll do your turn for you. And that's at the dump at Ingalls Park, from eight AM to twelve PM. Chad, you can wear your funny hat out there?
Among other things.
All right. Cheryl, anything else? Anything? Thank you for going in. Did good. We didn't have any glitches. Chad?
Uh, yeah, I just want to talk about capital group projects. Uh, we have a tremendous amount of projects going on right now. We have a story so project going up in LMDs, that's some sixty streets, and that should start physical story, uh, the first week in, in, in October. Uh, they're right now doing, uh, crack sealing and removal of the stain and striping, et cetera. And, uh, so they're, they're very active. They're going to communicate, they're already communicating with the residents, telling them that the activities and when they're going to occur, that they'll get a, each resident will get a follow-up on a specific date that they're supposed to do the story on their street. Uh, they'll have done calls asking for specific dates, uh, but they will provide that to the residents when it comes time for their street. Um, we have, uh, several waterline projects going on. Hamner, Temescale just started today. Vines is starting, I think, next week. We have Storm Dream Project on, uh, going on, on Belup that started this week. We all have one that is shortly, hopefully be finishing up on Corona, first and second. Uh, that is one item I want to mention to the council that the contractor actually was going so well and so fast on the project, he's unfortunately two weeks ahead of his planned schedule to do paving, uh, with his contractor, which is All American Asphalt. So, uh, All American is not available unless we allow, uh, them to do paving on Saturday. So they are, I've given them permission to do paving on Saturday, so they will finish, uh, the paving on Corona, uh, this Saturday, um, in one day. So, um, they're going to have a tremendous amount of trucks coming out of their activity. Uh, they're coordinating and notifying the residents, they've already sent notices today, residents about that. And so, uh, if you do get any comments or concerns about that, please forward them to me. I'm aware, but I've emphasized to the contractor that they must communicate with these folks so they understand what's going on. Hopefully, most folks won't be too burdened about it because it's on Saturday versus a work week during the week. So hopefully this turns out to be a positive thing, but at least get the road back in action. It's totally torn up at this point, they've gone down to subgrade, so it's ready and they've been driving on dirt for a week now. So I apologize for doing work on Saturday, but it just turns out that this needs to be done. And in the end, I think it will be a very good product they're going to be happy with. So with that, I just wanted to make sure you guys knew about that in case we're asking about what's going on. That's what we're doing. So with that, I appreciate your time.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Well, you need, you're going to notify all the residents.
They've been notified today.
And then, what will you do to upgrade your traffic control?
To upgrade it?
Or, I mean, as far as, obviously, you're going to be running the larger quantity of trucks.
Correct.
Are you going to make any changes to your traffic control with the contractor?
It was the same traffic control, it was just said during, during the week, it's just being done all on Saturday. And then just, again, they're going to, through the sections that are going to be available, they're going to flag and allow people to come in. And, but once they get, because they're doing a solid model with the paving, moving, I believe they're going to go south to north. So they're moving and, and so they're not, they're coming in that direction. Uh, they're going to continue to communicate to residents and remind them, hey, if you need to get out, this is the time to do it because we're going to be basically blocking off in paving. So you're, you're at least going to be prevented from coming back in on the surface for at least an hour. They're trying to get at least an hour, they feel they could, residents could come back on, they would prefer three, but they're, they're trying to send them to.
I may have misunderstood you because on your original plan, if you were doing it during the week, you were, or were not going to do it all in one day.
No, they would do it during, they'd probably do it over three or four days.
Correct, so you, that's why I meant by additional trucks, you're going to try to accelerate and do it all in one day.
Correct.
Additional traffic control.
I understand. I'll talk about that. So we're, we're having a meeting, not, not meeting.
Do your little best.
They'll do it. But we are, we do have a meeting with the contractor tomorrow, eight o'clock, to go over everything to make sure everything's been done, that the letters were provided today, was what I was told, I haven't given a copy of the letter. And we're going to have to size and verify how they're going to make sure everybody is accommodated who may have any, um, activities going on that may impact their, their residences.
Chad, since it is Saturday, can you get that, my channel or that schedule to Eric's people? Because most of the offices are closed except his guys take all the calls.
Oh, sure.
Uh, one other thing I'm adding, it's a good program on yours on the list. The spury that's going on in the hills, if we can avoid the Mondays out there, and we already have that. I know it's the contractor's schedule, but it is trash picking.
Actually, we have already cleared, and it was actually the contractor's request after talking with management, that they're not doing any activities on Mondays at all.
And then, the other thing, and it's, it's a great deal, and that's your interactive, uh, list of CMP projects. And I'm just, I wish we could get that out more into the public of, of people to go on that site and see what you're actually doing. It's a benefit.
Thank you.
People look at it, they can see, hey, that's what they're doing. So it doesn't scare them. So it's, it's easy to read. It makes it easier for people like myself. So, thank you.
Would you provide a demonstration of that in the city council meeting?
Sure. And then, anything that you do, make sure we get that information out in the weekly letter so that people do that. Appreciate that. Thank you. Steve?
Nothing.
Ryan? Quiet, all right? Put your thing on, you okay? Gina? Eric?
Yes, sir.
Scott, anybody left? He didn't whisper, wait a moment. He didn't bring a substitution in?
He goes to Eric.
Huh? I did, I told him, you know, our boys aren't here and he told me that for Rupa Valley I have to step in, but appreciate that. The investigator's in there, got those two eleven suspects, so thank you. Kudos to those guys.
Oh, we have to pass it along. Thank you.
Thank you, all right. Anything else going on in the?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. Uh, I will, my, I want to confirm, uh, because I got the council interested in it. Uh, I did get confirmation today from flood control that the Crestview, uh, project, Storm Project is up to bid. It hasn't been up to bid for a couple of weeks and they expect to come back mid-October for review and war in November.
All right, excellent. All right, hopefully before it rains. All right, and that's it, and so, we're done?